This is a regular meeting of the Mount Healthy City Schools Board of Education, July 19, 2021. This is a meeting of the Board of Education in public and is not to be considered a public meeting. If anyone has anything that they want to address the Board or anything, though, they can let us know before we start. Could we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis? President. Mr. Glenn?
Kenny, are you there?
In the buzzer.
Oh, okay, okay. I don't think he counts as here anymore, though. I think he's sort of listening in, but he doesn't get to vote or anything like that.
Got you. Okay. Here, but not here.
Here, but not here, yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
And Dr. Turner?
Yes. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Pride of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Board members have had the opportunity to look over the agenda for this evening. Do I have a motion to accept the agenda as written?
So moved.
Second.
Oh, gone.
Moved by Mr. Kilgore, seconded by Ms. Bryant. Any discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes. Board members have also had the opportunity to see the minutes from the June 28 meeting. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes as submitted?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Kilgore, seconded by Mrs. Ellis. Any discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes. Item six, Special Orders, Mount Healthy Teachers Association.
There are none.
Communications announcements, public input?
No.
Nothing?
Nothing.
Item seven, Great Oaks Board Report, Mrs. Ellis.
Okay. They, well, we had everybody in on this July meeting because they announced last month that the monthly board of directors meetings returned to full in-person in July. So everybody showed up. Okay, they did the student handbook for the 21-22 for the high school student was presented to the board. And program changes, the board formally approved program changes for the 21-22 school year. Nine new satellite programs and nine partnering school districts have been added. The aviation maintenance technician program at Diamond Oaks will be offered. Aviation classes will be held at the Cincinnati West Airport. The IT system and cybersecurity and web application and game development programs at Live Oak and Laurel Oak have been combined to create IT Academy at Live Oaks and Laurel Oaks. This will provide information technology students with more options for coursework. And five satellite programs were disinvested for the 21-22 school year. Great Oaks Educational Foundation scholarships. The Great Oaks Educational Foundation awarded 23,500 in grants and scholarships to 21 high school and adult graduates. Funds may be used for either further education or tools and material for a career depending on the restrictions of the individual scholarship. School nurse review. The four school nurses have more than 5,000 total interactions with students during the 2020 and 2021 school year. Fair school funding. President, CEO, Harry Snyder, gave a brief overview of the potential impact of fair school funding plan, which was approved as part of Ohio's 22-23 biennium budget. Because Great Oaks had been subject to a cap on state funding over the past several years as it roamed and grew, the district is in line to receive additional funds over the next two years. Was something I was going to say? Hmm. Oh, I meant the nurses. That's what I was going to say. It was Zoom. They, they, these ladies are going to be stationed on each one of the campuses for that wraparound and the mental health thing. I think these, the two I meant, they are into that mental health thing. So they gave us a little synopsis of their history and education and where they had worked and everything. So it was very interesting, you know, that, and I'm kind of, I'm not kind of, I am glad that they are now putting some emphasis on the mental health of the students because we just, we just don't realize the burdens that a lot of them are coming to school with nowadays. And it's, you know, and it really impedes their learning. That's it.
Thank you. Next, we have the legislative report. First item, House Bill 244. Governor Dewine has signed into law House Bill 244, which prohibits public schools from requiring any vaccine that does not have full FDA approval. That would be all the COVID vaccines at the moment. Prohibits public schools from discriminating against any individual who has not received such a vaccine, including requiring them to or prohibiting them from engaging in activities open to vaccinated individuals. It modifies quarantine procedures for individuals who come from a high-risk country as defined by the CDC. And it requires K through 12 schools to allow military children who are relocating but are not yet residents of a district to enroll electronically and participate in technology-based educational opportunities. The state budget, as Mrs. Ellis said, Governor Dewine has signed into law the amended substitute House Bill 110, the main operating biennium budget for 2022-23. Includes the fair school funding plan, which will apply only for fiscal year 21-22 without, so it's part of the biennium budget, but there was going to originally be a six-year phase in, and they're going to do it over, over the shorter period. It also addresses vouchers. Voucher amounts will be increased and eligibility for vouchers will also be increased. House Bill 82, the governor also signed that into law. It's the revised state report card bill. It will replace the A through F rating with a five-star system that includes descriptions. As far as I can tell, that's really the only difference. Instead of A through F, it's five stars. It maintains the six components currently used, gap closing, achievement, progress, graduation, early literacy, and college career workforce and military readiness. But it changes how these are rated and calculated. It delays the college career workforce and military readiness component until the 2024-2025 school year. And it's not technically legislative, but the Supreme Court, the Ohio Supreme Court also has ruled that school employees may not carry firearms unless they have peace officer training or 20 years of experience as a peace officer.
I got a question on the one about the military, the kids. Does that mean that they have to do it electronically?
I think if I'm understanding it, it means that if a military family were moving into the district, which we don't have a military base or anything, so I don't think it's going to be an issue here, but if they were moving into the district but were not here yet, say, when school starts in August.
Oh, okay.
We would have to let them participate electronically even if they weren't physically in the district yet.
Okay.
I think.
Thank you.
Okay. Item nine, report of the treasurer.
Thank you.
Ms. Brooks.
Item 9A is a recommendation to accept the schedule of bills for June 2021.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Ellis, seconded by Ms. Bryant. Any discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item 9B is a recommendation to accept the financial statement for June 2021.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Ellis, seconded by Ms. Bryant. Any discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item C is a recommendation to approve the employment of the following. Mary Corbin, grant coordinator, 225, step one, effect of August 1, 2021.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Ellis, seconded by Mr. Kilgore.
I'd like to just tell you that we are getting so many grants, just leaps and bounds, which is a great thing. However, we, we're going to, we need some help. So do you want to take on from there?
Sure. Thank you, Becky. So this year, we have received right at $30 million in grant money for our district. And some of that came from care funding from the state, but many of them were competitive grants. You know, Jana and her team have written them. We have many people writing them. And with grants, when you get a large grant, part of the grant, you have to have a manager on site. And they will check on compliance and make sure that we're doing things properly. So it's really important that the district have someone in place that has an understanding of schools, understanding of systems, how things work. Because if you do not follow all the rules, then you have to give back the money. And we do not want to give back any money that's given to our district. So with the focus on grant and grant writing, we have been hiring people that have a background in education. We especially like to find people who have a background in counseling and administration, which is a little harder. But like Carol mentioned, there's a big push on social emotional learning and mental health for students. So if we have grant writers that can speak to these topics, it gives us an advantage when we're trying to apply for the grants. So in this last process for a grant person that will start in August, we had some applicants. Jana led the team for interviewing. And after they went through the process, they told me that they had selected Mary Corbin. So the reason that Becky is bringing this forward tonight, grants is under, in some ways, under the treasurer because of the money involved, but Mary is my sister. And so I wanted, one, to make sure that that was public because I don't want anyone thinking that I'm trying to hide something. Secondly, through the process, Jana was not aware of that. Through the process, once she told me that that is who she selected, I told Jana that she should go through the reference checks just like normal, but I did tell her at that point that Mary was my sister. So I just wanted to, there's nothing in policy that prevents that. I would not be her supervisor. She is under a different, she's under Dr. Harris. And like I said, grants are working with, a lot with the treasurer's department, but I did want to just mention it in this forum because I didn't want anyone to think that I was trying to hide anything.
Okay. Most of these grants, are they like a three or five year?
Mm-hmm. Right.
And for Mary here, that is a five year?
No. The grant that she'll be working on is just a two-year grant.
And then after that?
She would have to get another grant in order to continue. So that's, with the grant positions, they are really working for their funding. So as they find grants, that supports their positions. And if they don't find grants, then that position ends with the grant.
And she would be over just one specific grant?
Right now, she would be tied to the evening school grant that will start in August and then will start actually having evening school in September. And that grant has two years and then it has a provisional three. That would take up around 30 hours of the week, leaving 10 hours to find additional grants. And we do have some smaller grants. The smaller grants do not require someone to be assigned so many hours a week, but we are giving the smaller grants as part of the workload to our grant staff so that we can make sure that we're in compliance with them as well.
Grant money is good money.
Right.
Free money.
That's right.
All go about free.
Right.
And what's, what's the size of this grant?
The, the evening school grant is $750,000.
Okay. Any further discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Hawkins?
Thank you. Under item A, we have some informational items. The first is relating to the change orders that have gone through this month with the Early Learning Center. And those are just listed, you know, we are making small modifications here or there, and we're excited that hopefully in September, our students will be in that building. The next item, we are participating in a pilot for ELA with Great Minds Publishing. The total cost for K through 8 is around $26,000. They did allow us to have pilots in the past to make sure that this was a program that was a good fit for our students and they did not charge us. We will be entering into an agreement with them. It's under that threshold for a vote, but I just wanted to make the board aware of We have received a donation, which is exciting, from, you know, Lori Daniels started with us around January-ish, and she has been working very hard on donations for our district. And she has secured a donation for $400,000 for our district. And we will be using that, which we'll come to in just a few minutes, but we are working to provide free internet for everyone in the Mount Healthy City School District. So we had been working, Cincinnati Bell has been a great partner to us, looking at phioptics and how we could provide that to all of our, not only students, but all residents in Mount Healthy. And the cost was right at 400,000. And Lori worked with an organization, and they are giving us a donation of 400,000 to pay for that. So we are, as long as the board approves that agreement tonight, we'll be working to get everything installed. They think it'll take about 60 days. And right now, the phioptics system runs up until you get to the old Rink's building. They will have to lay some phioptics to connect it on to where it comes off of 275. So that area of our district will not get it in Phase 1. They'll be getting it in Phase 2. So that will take just a little bit longer. What it will look like for our residents, if you've ever been to the airport or somewhere that has free Wi-Fi, you will be able to connect and there'll be like a little agreement that basically, you know, says you're going to use it appropriately. The nice thing is, as a school district, we can put information on that page where they land and give information, you know, about if we have something coming up that we'd like our community to participate in. And then our students will no longer have that obstacle of not having internet in their homes. So we're excited that we are going to be moving towards being a smart city. I do want to note, you know, the city of Mount Healthy has been helping us with this as well, and we appreciate their partnership in this as well. The next, the next thing is that we've received some more grants since the last board meeting. So the, since the last board meeting, we received a homeless round one grant in the amount of $185,757.14. We received a competitive McKinney-Vento homeless assistant grant. And some of the things primarily that that helps us with is transportation. Transportation is extremely expensive, and it is something that we are required by law to provide to our students who are experiencing homelessness. So this helps because that money then does not have to come out of the general fund. And so we can use that for other things. That will be over three years and, as I said, for $200,000. We also received expanding opportunities for each child grant in the amount of $69,955.64. So we just wanted to make you aware of those wonderful grant opportunities that are coming through. Item B is a recommendation that Mount Healthy City School District enter into an agreement with Cincinnati Bell to provide smart city phioptics Wi-Fi service to areas within the city of Mount Healthy through Mount Healthy City Schools. This will be paid for. Actually, originally, we had planned to pay for it with ESAR money. That's a different grant. But now we're going to be paying for it with the donation from Broadband Ohio.
Okay. So do we need to change that on the wording when we take the vote? It's no longer paid for with ESAR?
Right.
ARP funds?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So everybody just cross that out.
And it'll be Broadband?
Broadband Ohio.
Also, before we, before we move forward with that, it shouldn't be just within the city of Mount Healthy, correct? It should be within the Mount Healthy City School District?
Yes.
Which is completely different.
Right.
What is, well, she states that in the first part, that it's the Mount Healthy City School District.
Well, but, but.
The word description or the service.
Right. The service is going to be.
The city of Mount Healthy.
Yeah.
Which would not include like you and I. Because of the first.
It goes a little bit further than that.
Well, and either way, we're entering into the agreement for all of it.
Yes.
Because, yeah, I think the city is 1.7 square miles and the school district is nine square miles or something like that.
Sure.
So, okay. So the new wording, recommendation that Mount Healthy City School District enter into an agreement with Cincinnati Bell to provide smart city phioptics Wi-Fi service to areas within Mount Healthy City School District. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Kilgore, seconded by Mrs. Ellis. Any discussion?
Well.
Okay.
The word for whom?
Cincinnati Bell.
Mrs. Bryant is recusing herself on this.
Well, that's the case. I do too, but.
Well, if, if they're not dependents, spouses, they don't live in your home, they don't contribute to your household income, then you can still vote on it.
Okay. Also.
Also, if they don't benefit from your vote in any way.
Well, yeah. Your brother. I'm not quite sure, so yeah, that's fine. Go ahead and recuse, just to be safe.
Julie, okay, you didn't specify this last part, paid with.
No, we crossed that off.
Yeah, but.
I've got it written down.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
With the donation from Broadband.
Paid for, but yeah. So, yes, thank you. You're right.
Well, you were reading. Now this one, you read all of it.
Good catch.
Good.
Now, I'll be the first to acknowledge that I'm no whiz at computer stuff, so I'm going to look at Mr. Burdette here. Broadband, phioptics, Wi-Fi, broadband, that's all the same. I mean, what our students would be getting is actually Wi-Fi, not, yeah.
Correct. So they'll, they'll be able to get online with any of these.
Okay. All right.
Will we be able to block certain sites or certain areas?
We can. So it would be very similar to the hotspots that we give. Anything that we want to block, we can. So, you know, for instance, pornography, gambling, you know, the things that the district would, anything that would violate our district policy would be blocked. But, you know, it would be available to do educational or for our members of the community checking email or going to other sites. They would have that opportunity.
So just because, because we've discussed this, I mean, this is everyone who lives in the district, not just our students, not just our students' families. Anyone who lives in the district can, can take advantage of this. It's not a completely secure network because it is a public Wi-Fi.
Right. Similar if you were at Starbucks or the airport or something like that. You know, you just have to be aware that it is a public network.
But the other side is some type of agreement. When you pull up that.
Yes.
I accept whatever.
Exactly. Yes.
But our students who are in district have an extra protection on their phone, but they'll securely, they'll block the things that it's not confidential. So we wouldn't have to worry about that even if they were on a public, still wouldn't allow it. But if they had a cell phone, they could just stay on Facebook all day.
Theoretically, yeah. I think so.
Right. Yeah.
Good question. I'll get back to you.
Okay. Any additional discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
And Dr. Turner?
Yes. Very exciting.
We are. We're very excited about this. Item C is the recommendation to accept bus routes and bus stops for the 21-22 school year with the authorization for the superintendent to change routes as may become necessary. I do just want to also note that we are adding bussing for our 9 through 12 students. We are using grant money for that, and we are very excited to provide that for our students.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Kilgore, seconded by Mrs. Ellis. Any discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item D is recommendation to enter into a service agreement with Peterman LTD to provide transportation for special needs students.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Ellis, seconded by Mr. Kilgore. Any discussion?
It is. Yes.
Now, what type of vehicle? Are they going to be using vans, our vans?
Primarily vans unless there is some special reason that we need to use something else.
So we're using our vans that we have?
Yes.
And they're supplying the drivers?
They supply the drivers unless our population exceeds where we would have to use, and that's noted in some of the other services that we'll get to, but primarily our vans will be used and they provide the driver.
So the only thing we're really doing is paying for their drivers?
Exactly. Yes.
Any further discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item E is the recommendation to approve Medicare transportation as a provider for special needs homeless and foster student transportation.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Kilgore, seconded by Mrs. Ellis. Any discussion?
This is a private company, Medicare.
It is. And we, we go through and we approve this, and then if a situation happens, then it has been board-approved. So often, especially with foster students, that varies throughout the year. And we do have some grant money that we will be able to apply to that when that comes up.
Any further discussion?
So are these just cases that you know?
Some of it is. Some of it is specifically related. There may be a special, a medical need, so there, there might be something related to that. Or we have a large population of special needs students at Mount Healthy, so at some point, we may not have enough vans, and so this could be utilized if needed.
Any other discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
And Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item F is the recommendation to enter into contract with Universal Transportation Systems, UTS, as a provider for special needs homeless and foster student transportation. Again, another option for our students.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Ellis, seconded by Ms. Bryant. Any discussion?
Is this the Universal Transportation System, another name for Peterman?
No. It's, it's UTS. They're called UTS.
They're located down in Fairfield.
They're located down in Fairfield.
Yeah.
Universal.
So this is, it's the...
Are they owned by Peterman?
Well, I thought they were, but I'm not sure. I see their vehicles and their lot.
National. Right, this is, this is totally separate, it's, it's...
You say it is or is not?
Is not.
It's completely different.
Yes, they have no, well, to my knowledge, they have no connection to.
And often, often UTS is provided when there's a situation, for instance, a foster child may be re... So let's say we have a student who lives in Mount Healthy and they find placement with a foster family in Milford. Well, by law, they can continue to attend Mount Healthy and so UTS is typically the provider that would drive to Milford and pick up the student and bring them to Mount Healthy.
Because by law, they're allowed to come to Mount Healthy and by law, we have to provide the transportation.
They could choose to attend Milford if that's where they are, but trying to lessen the disruption in the lives of the students. But we can definitely check on that. I'm, it's not, okay. Okay, great.
Okay.
At one time, they were. We're known as Peterman.
Okay.
And it's slash, University Transportation. But I'll take your word off.
Okay, any other discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Yes. Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item G is recommendation to enter into a software subscription renewal agreement with Aubrey to provide educational software for administrators, teachers, students, and parents. The total cost is $96,426 for three years.
Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Kilgore, seconded by Mrs. Ellis. Any discussion?
This is actually a savings over the previous... We saved approximately $10,000, Michael, over the previous contract we had on an annual basis.
Okay. No further discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item H is the recommendation to approve the attached memorandum of understanding, MOUs, as negotiated by the Mount Healthy Teachers Association and the Mount Healthy City School District effective with new contract dates for the 2021-2022 school year. These were actually attached to the negotiated contracts. We decided to carry everything over one year and officially negotiate next year for a three-year contract, so we are rolling them over because they were attached to the original contracts.
Any, do I have a motion? Sorry.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Kilgore, seconded by Mrs. Ellis. Any discussion? Could we take a vote, please?
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item I is the recommendation to enter into a memorandum of understanding agreement with the Healthcare Connection to implement a school-based center, health center at the high school. And we're excited about this. Students will actually be able to go to the clinic in the high school to get medical care, dental care, and it's a partnership with the Healthcare Connection that is in Mount Healthy. And ICE, thank you, thank you. Envision, thank you very much. So that is really important because if a teacher notices that his student's having trouble seeing, they can go down, they can get an exam, and they can get the glasses provided for them. Again, removing obstacles for our students.
Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Kilgore, seconded by Mrs. Ellis. Any discussion?
So are there gonna be a doctor on staff for these various clinics?
There are, they rotate through. The doctors are there, not all the time, but there's a schedule. There'll be nurse practitioners, nurses. There will be a medical person there at all times. And then, at different times, doctors or eye doctors or dentists will be rotating through so our students can make appointments. Then they are actually going to take teams to our elementaries. But it will be a permanent clinic at the high school where the nurse's office is and so that will be there and open every day.
Okay, now, is this, the students or the parents of the students gonna be charged or how's that gonna be, it's gonna be free to them?
We actually received a grant for this, so there is not a charge. They will have to fill out the permission form for that and, you know, they don't have to use it, but again, and they actually, they came and did our physicals for our athletes. They've been working on that and giving those to our athletes as a service.
So mom and dad can come up here and also...
They can, or our teachers. You know, with teachers, at the end of the day, you need to go and see a medical person. It's right there in the school. Or if you're at the elementary, you can drive over to the high school.
And this is the, the medical place that has the new offices up there on Compton?
That's right.
Okay, any further discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
One thing is, this is the building where our school was at one time, right?
Yes.
Oh, okay, that's, okay.
The old Duval location.
Huh?
The old Duval.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I thought that was torn down.
Well, yeah, the building's gone, they built a new building.
Oh, okay.
That's where it was, yeah. The ghost of the Duval building.
All righty.
It is, very nice, Ms. Bryant. Item J, recommendation to enter into a contract agreement with Jennifer Danner as manager of the Comprehensive Literacy State Development Grant, CLSD, effective August 2nd through June 10th. Her salary is paid out of that grant.
Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion?
So what age group is this going on? High school, elementary?
Elementary primarily.
Any additional discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
And Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item K is recommendation to enter into contract agreement with John Beckmeyer as a consultant to the district for $450 a day, not exceed 100 days.
Want to fix, it actually says contact agreement in the wording?
Oh, you're right. Thank you.
Do I have a motion?
He will be in contact.
Second.
No discussion?
We're not there yet. Moved by Mr. Kilgore, seconded by Mrs. Ellis. Any discussion? And this is...
Thank you, Mr. Glenn. Mr. Beckmeyer was our interim business manager and he has been working very closely with the Early Learning Center. So during the transition, Gary Crowley has come on, starting August 1st. Since Mr. Beckmeyer had been very involved in the Early Learning Center, we wanted to give an opportunity for him to work with Gary and finish out that project so there was no disruption to that project. And then, that's why it's a consultant basis, since Gary officially starts in August.
So they'll overlap a little bit?
They'll overlap a little bit.
Okay, thanks, Ms.
Okay, any further discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item L is the recommendation that Mount Healthy City School District participate in the Seamless Summer Option Food Service Program for the 2021-2022 school year.
Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Kilgore, seconded by Mrs. Ellis. Any discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Our students that are involved in summer school, we feed them while they're there.
Okay, that's okay. Any additional discussion? I'm just, I'm plowing ahead, I'm hungry.
She's hungry.
I'm hungry. Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item M is the recommendation to approve the breakfast and lunch programs for the 2021-2022 school year. All students eat breakfast and lunch for free. If students would like to purchase an additional breakfast or lunch, the cost would be as follows. Breakfast would be $1.50. Student lunch prices at the elementary, $2.75. Junior high and high school is $3.00 and milk is 50 cents.
Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Kilgore, seconded by Mrs. Ellis. Any discussion?
It's higher. I'm not sure exactly what it is, but it, staff always pay more than that.
Now, come over here and get a carton of milk.
Any further discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Oh, don't we need a motion first? Did we get a motion? I'm sorry, I was down at the other one. Ms. Bryant?
On, on item M, Mr. Kilgore made the motion and Mrs. Ellis seconded.
Sorry about that.
And then we had the discussion.
I was moving along faster than Dr. Turner, that's all. So I got Ms. Bryant, Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
And Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Item N is recommendation to approve the Mount Healthy Junior/Senior High School Handbook for the 2021-2022 school year.
Do I have a motion? So move.
So move, I second.
Moved by Mrs. Ellis, seconded by Mr. Kilgore. Any discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item O is the recommendation to approve the Elementary Parent Student Handbook for the 2021-2022 school year.
Do I have a motion? So move. Moved by Mrs. Ellis, seconded by Ms. Bryant. Any discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
And Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item P is recommendation to accept the following donation to Mount Healthy Athletic Department. Donations, sorry about that. $250 was donated by Diane Raymond Schneider and $300 was donated by Charles Ogden. If you don't know him, he is our new HR director. This was to help students participate in summer camps. Or football trip, I'm sorry. I think of that as a summer camp, the football camp thing, so...
Okay, do I have a motion? So move. Moved by Mrs. Ellis, seconded by Ms. Bryant. I'm wondering if any district has ever said no to donations, if they didn't come from, you know, somebody real shady or something. Do we have any discussion? Could we take a vote, please?
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
And Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item Q is the first reading for recommended Mount Healthy Board of Education by law and policy change. We are updating our cellphone policy, personal communication devices, and it would say grades pre-K through six. Students in pre-K through six may carry their cellphones during school day as long as they are silenced and out of sight. In the, for instance, pocket purse, backpack, locker, et cetera. Students may use cellphones in class only with permission of the teacher. In grades seven through 12, students in seventh through 12th grade may carry their cellphones during the school day as long as they are silenced and out of sight, pocket purse, backpack, locker, et cetera. Students may use their cellphones in class only with permission of the teacher. Students may use their phones before and after school, between classes and during lunch. Cellphones must be put away and silenced when entering a classroom. And that's just the first reading. We would officially, next month, vote on that.
To, would like, they would need the permission of the teacher to use, say like if they had a calculator?
Yes, yes. So, and that's, that's a great example. In the elementary and secondary buildings, sometimes students will use their phones as a calculator, so they would just ask the teacher if they could do that. Or a teacher may say, you may use your phone as a calculator if you choose.
And the penalty, if they have called?
It's progressive. It starts out with, you know, a detention and then would move on to more severe such as our Alternative to Suspension Program, then out-of-school suspension. And hopefully, if it is a continued violation, we would be pulling the parents in to find a solution for that. Item R is our consent agenda. A lot of transition, summer work, employment, everything is listed there.
Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda as written?
So move.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Ellis, seconded by Mr. Kilgore. Any discussion?
Yeah, is there a reason why these different people waited to this late to resign or whatever they did?
That, that is always a challenge. The ones that are moving to different school districts, they wanted to wait until the board where they were at had their meeting. A lot of those boards had the meeting at the end of June and so that, they put their resignation in right after the other district. Some are moving and they just recently found out that they were moving. But we do always appreciate and encourage people to let us know earlier so that we can replace them.
For the teachers that's moving on to another district, did they give a reason why?
One per, I know, one person, it was a promotion. So they were able to actually move into a central office position and so, you know, we don't ever want to hold anybody back. One person, it was closer to home, were the two that I heard about.
None were unhappy, moved on? You probably had a few, but I didn't, you don't have to mention names. I didn't know if you got any comments that we were unhappy for that, that, that reason and we decided to look elsewhere?
They don't normally tell me that, but, but, you know, it, it could be that people are unhappy. We are, you know, making a lot of changes in the, the district and holding a high standard for students, so there, I'm sure there are some people that chose to move on because of that.
I know at one time, in the previous administration, we asked them to fill out a little survey and I'm not sure if we still do that or not.
We do.
To ask, you know...
An exit survey. We, we ask each employee to do an exit survey with human resources. Some are willing to come and do it and some are not. But yes, we do try to ask and gather that information.
Because we don't want somebody to leave because they're unhappy.
Right.
They're a good teacher.
That's true.
If we can say, hey, you know, try it one more year, see how you do it.
Absolutely. We hope that we're creating the culture that they'll want to stay before they get to the point where they interview for another. And like Mr. Ross, I'll just note this. Technically, he resigned, but he is still going to be in our building. He took a, we, we're starting a new program with the Oaks and he is moving to the Great Oaks position, but still at Mount Healthy High School. So that's one situation where he's technically not working for us anymore because the Oaks is paying for that program.
Any additional discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
And I did want to note one other, one other thing. And I did want to note one other, one other thing, we are going to be presenting information in the next few months about some potential opportunities at, at our district office building, we have been looking at grant money, and we are hoping that it will be approved through ODE, that we will be able to change the first floor of this building into classroom space for some of our special education students that are outplaced where we play, pay tuition, and bringing them back, and then that also would enable us to renovate other areas of district office, including potentially creating a community center with the gym and the areas in this building, so over the next few months, we will be entering information for our grant coordinators at the state level, and if we get that approval, I'll be bringing information to the board for you to look at and approve as we head down that path.
Thank you. Item 11, special orders, we don't have any 12, open discussion, anybody wanna discuss anything? 13, Board of Education report, the date of the next Board of Education meeting is Monday, August 16th at 6:00 PM, and then, we need to go into executive session to consider the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official, uh, do I have a motion to enter executive session for that purpose?
So move.
Moved by Mrs. Ellis, seconded by Ms. Bryant, um, any discussion? Could we take a vote?
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes, and I will say, normally, we say we're not taking any official action or, or any votes after executive session, but this time, that is not true, we need to vote to, we need to vote on the new contract for Ms. Brooks, and that's what the executive session is all about, so we will be voting on that when we come back, but that will be the only item of business when we come back. Okay, entering executive session, are our new clocks right? It looks like they might be, okay, well, I'm gonna say 6:55.
Okay.
Executive session at 7:33.
Oh, wait a minute, that's another piece of paper.
Okay, um, item 13C on the agenda is that we should approve the contract of Rebecca J. Brooks as treasurer of Mount Healthy City School District, effective August 1st, 2021 to July 31st, 2024, we've agreed on a two-year contact, contract with an option for third year, do I have a motion to enter into this contract?
Second.
Moved by Ms. Bryant, seconded by Mrs. Ellis, um, any discussion, not that we can actually discuss it at this point, so, can we have a vote, please?
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
No.
And Dr. Turner?
Yes. Uh, item 14 is adjournment, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Moved by Mrs. Ellis, seconded by Ms. Bryant, any discussion?
Move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'm gonna say that's everybody.